Um.
I logged in earlier, it was like a Quentin.
Yeah.
He was on the screen.
Okay, well, we have a quorum of the board, so um we so uh we can, we can get started. Um, this is the uh May fifth meeting of the Hamilton zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, and the agenda is uh to uh elect a member as chi- chair of the board. Then the public hearing on application of Tim and Mariah Herrick for two thirty-one Sagamore Street. Uh, for a special permit under section three point six accessory apartment of the bylaw to build a uh two-story, three-bay garage with accessory apartment above, and then updates from the chair. Um, so the first order of business, uh there are no minutes, the first order of business is to elect the chair and uh um at the risk of being forward, um I've come back on the board uh as an interim. And um so does anyone want to nominate anyone as a chair to be chair of the board? Any nominations?
I I don't even know him allow, I'm too new.
No, well, somebody has, I I guess, you know, at the risk.
Who would like to be the chair?
Well, at the risk of sounding, of putting, you know, sounding like Alex Herndy Hague, I I do have a lot of experience at this, so um I am willing to uh be the chair.
I would, I would like to nominate Bill Bauer as a chair if he, if he was so, like, I take the responsibility.
Is, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
You're well qualified.
Don't, don't sound so excited, Bruce. Okay, is there any discussion, any other nominations? Uh, then this, we have to, this will be a roll call vote. Um, so I'll start with David.
Aye.
Okay, just, just for the record, just say your name.
Uh, David Perrin Chief, eighteen Oak Road, I, I agree with Bill, uh, giving care.
Okay, Bruce?
Hi, Bruce Gingerick, say aye, supporting your nomination.
Okay, uh, Bill Bowler, aye, thank you very much for the confidence and um you know, we can move on to the uh hearing on the application for a special permit for the in-law apartment or for the accessory apartment, excuse me. Um.
I, I can share my screen and walk through it if, if you want me to.
Okay. Um, so if you want to uh just introduce yourself, Brian?
Yep. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm Brian Stein, I'm the architect for the applicants, Mariah and Tim Herrick, who are on the call tonight. Um, everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
So we are at two thirty-one Sagamore Street, um, there's an existing house, as you can see, outlined here with my cursor. Um, we are proposing to add a small connector piece and then a three-bay garage with, you know, said accessory apartment above. Um, the lot is slightly undersized by zoning, uh, but we meet, you know, all other parameters of the of the bylaw, so the, the addition itself, the garage connector and everything could be done by right. Um, it's really just the accessory apartment that we're here for tonight. Um, the applicant's, um, Mariah's parents will be living here in the apartment. Um, but, you know, down the road, you know, they wanted a little more flexibility and, you know, the accessory apartment bylaw uh gave them that versus the in-law apartment bylaw. Um, so we are proposing a um let me go, let me go to the second floor here, a um, just a one-bedroom in-law apartment, bath and a half, kitchen and living space, basically, um, small deck that's, you know, on the backside of the, of the garage. Um, it's fairly private. Um, and then again below, sorry, below, it was just, you know, three-bay garage and a small entry space, common entry space for the apartment and the garage. Um, and then there's the connector in between that serves as partial mudroom and laundry for the main part of the house. Um, this is a view from Sagamore Street, essentially as it is now, um, you know, modest house here, the garage and um connector will be here and the garage doors will face to the side, so you won't see them from the road. Um, the, you know, vegetation out front, you know, screens the building except for, you know, obviously where the driveway is, so you won't see a whole lot of, of the building from, from most places um along the road. The driveway currently just goes straight up to the house. We um, you know, want to enlarge it and do a circular driveway which will allow cars to, you know, more easily enter Sagamore Street instead of having to sometimes back onto Sagamore Street. Um, there will be a, you know, a driveway out in front of, around the side of the garage as well. Um, since this was drawn, the owner has asked to, you know, that they, you know, pave, they want to have paved the driveway versus be gravel. I know there were a couple of concerns from the neighbor next door about drainage. Um, you know, I know you saw, I saw some of the pictures that were sent around from the last, you know, heavy rainstorm that we had, and there was some you know, pooling in this area of the Herricks property. Um, you know, we'll be able to deal with that um by having kind of a gravel edge to the driveway that can infiltrate and not spill off onto the lawn into the low areas or onto the neighbor's property. Um, and then any roof runoff will be directed into um gutters and, you know, subgrade um infiltrators at each downspout. So that's, that's pretty straightforward there. Um, but, you know, we're basically here for the apartment itself and, you know, part, part of this was to look kind of like a barn, you know, attached to the house and fit in with the neighborhood. So, you know, in most cases, you won't even know the apartment's actually there. Um, there's three bays to the garage, so all the cars will be accounted for in the garage. Um, and there really won't be much of an impact to the neighborhood by having the accessory apartment there. Um, that's just the backside as well with the deck, um, having a second entrance down to grade uh that, that's required. Um, that's basically it, uh, be, be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Um, okay, before we get into questions, just for the record, I'll just uh read or summarize um some of the, the correspondence we've, that we've received on this. Um, we did get a letter dated April fifteenth from the Board of Health. Um, just say, essentially saying that the existing septic system is not sufficient to handle the increase in flow and the office will not sign any building permit until a new system is designed and approved.
Um.
Can I jump in real quick on that, Bill?
Sure.
So I, I should have mentioned that before, um, but the Herricks had someone out, you know, late in the fall, it got to be a little bit too late to be doing test pits, so they've got someone coming out again, I think in about a month or so to redo that, the, the engineer that they have, you know, there's, there's plenty of land area there for them to do it and felt that they can get their six, the six-bedroom septic system that they would need and um, but, you know, as, as I mentioned in the application, this will be contingent on Board of Health approval anyway.
Right, um, could you just go back to the site plan for a second? So, so just roughly, where, where is the existing um septic?
It's, it's out front here.
Out front, so presumably it would stay there and be?
Either there or in the back.
Okay, um, so yeah, it, it looks like you do have plenty of area, but, you know, you just wouldn't want to have, have to, you know, have us issue a permit, special permit and then have to come back because something about the septic system impacted the design, but it, that's probably not the case, but um then we did get, we got a letter from Chris and Lisa Kudemi on Blueberry Lane. Um, just, um, they have no objections to the proposal, so. And then, as you said, we did get, there was a letter or email from uh the Butters, two seventeen Sagamore, which is Pamela and Ranji Balsey. With respect, with respect to the runoff issue, so. Um, I, I'm assuming this pride, you, you described how you deal with runoff. Um, I'm assuming this project doesn't come under the uh
Stormwater management?
Uh, the blank on the name, but the bylaw, the, the runoff, the, the groundwater bylaws.
Stormwater management?
Water management.
No, no, not disturbing much land at all.
Okay. Um. So, okay, now, that, that, that was the, uh, any comments to see, receive from uh Butters and other um uh and town boards, so are there any questions from the board?
Questions from the board?
Bruce? It looks pretty straightforward to me.
Okay.
As long as the water issues taken care of.
Well, what was the reasoning for making it look like a barn? I was just looking at the house, it kind of, it doesn't really look like a traditional farmhouse with the front, so I was just wondering why you changed the look and not just match it with the rest of the house.
Part of it was so we didn't have a, a large mass of the same thing, and given that it's kind of broken off from the house, it looks more of, I, I know it's not a traditional farmhouse, but there are, you know, colonials with barns as well and
Okay.
Um, so that was kind of the reason to break down the massive a little bit.
All right.
Um, could just, the, where are the entrances to the, to the apartment, you said on?
Right here and then up the stairs in the back, so come in off the deck and then come up from the stairs from below.
And nothing visible from the street.
I'm sorry?
No, no entrances visible from the street.
No.
Except for the main house, which.
Correct.
Okay. Um, are there any questions from members of the public who?
Uh, yes, hi, Tosh Blake here, um, I'm actually a resident, yeah, I'll identify myself, Tosh Blake, I'm a resident of two seventeen Sagamore Street. I'm actually the son of Pamela and Ranja Balsey, I live right next door, um, we sent a letter about the water concerns. Um, yeah, we have a few um concerns about that, I guess, we, we haven't seen plans of the elevation of the ground and what the structure, you know, really into that letter of what the rather large driveway, almost it's kind of like a motor court, which would be extending it almost to our property line. Um, you know, if you saw the pictures looking out from our, our living room, basically, um, it's elevated ground, so we don't know how steep that's going to be and how much, how close that's going to be to our property line, it was kind of vague on the um, the plans, the overhead view of uh that was submitted, I think, the BDS design um, uh sheets. And uh, so we're wondering like if cars park there, for instance, in addition to the, you know, you know, water stuff, but um, you know, will headlights be going right into our windows, I saw there's maybe a few kind of tree, you know, trees that they're going to try to screen it with, but it looks like headlights are, you know, if cars come out, the, the garages, they'll be shining right into our house. It looks like an unusual design, just looking around the neighborhood and houses in this district where you don't specifically have anyone's garage facing directly someone else's house, they, they face towards the street. So, you know, there's no light, I don't see any exterior plans where lights are going to be, things like that typically, you know, people have lights, exterior lights on the garages on at night, I'm not sure if they're going to do that, I know our neighbors do actually have bright lights typically, you know, in front of the, as their house exists at night, you know, fade into their driveway and such, so I assume that practice is going to continue with the proposed structure which faces our living room and two bedrooms. So, you know, in our opinion, that might be kind of a problem, um, and uh, yeah, it's just for, the way we look at the map, um, the way it is on their plot, it is, like, as it admitted, kind of an undersized plot. They're expanding their structure from their original house, it already has had an addition and this proposed addition, the combination of these two additions are actually longer in front of the original front of their, the original structure, the original house, and it's moving towards our property and especially towards our house, which is I believe, the rendering is, you know, just kind of approximately sighted our house, but it looks to me, if you look at the plan, the overhead plan, uh, our house is not actually shown as close it is to the property line, uh, you know, so if, like, you can kind of probably get a look at, I, I included um a picture from inside our house with a window frame, you can see how close we really are. So all of that, including the, the proposed structure, plus cars in that um driveway um are going to be a lot closer to our, our windows in our house, you know, than currently is. So, and, and I think our, and our neighbor, it indicated, at least to my mother, he told her that, and he could correct me if this is not right, but he said he's going to basically parking a lot of cars outside anyway, so we're going to have, you know, cars and stuff right there, um. That's unusual for the neighborhood, I think there's only one other house that has a driveway, I mean, like, the garage base facing another property, but they have a lot of land in between them and their house, can't even see that, but we'll be seeing it right across from our our living room and two-bedroom windows, so, you know, that's a concern about the sighting, not so much even the size of it in that sense, but the sighting of the additions. You know, I mean, and it's, to us, I was just looking at the, say, the um, the south elevation from Sagamore Street. I think one of our, your board members did, was, was wondering about the, just design-wise, um, it's kind of like, in the bulk of it, to me, I know you tried to, I guess, minimize it by making the garage sideways, but it, it is, it looks pretty large, I mean, to us, it looks kind of like two conjoined single-family houses. Um, I don't know, but that's more of a bulk issue. We, you know, we, we're not against them actually putting an addition on the house, but facing and bringing it towards our property line, I think is just too much for the density of having the two houses so close together. If they put it on, you know, on the other side, that would be more amenable to us, you know, if, if that, if, if it is a possibility. Because they'd have plenty of room for driveway space, and if they expanded it on their north side instead of the south side towards us, there's no, there are no houses abutting on a, on the, on the, abutting properties or actually no houses near that side, we happen to be right near them. But um, you know, we're kind of dismayed that it's extending towards our property where we, you know, our privacy. There are some trees with a kind of thin uh Canadian hemlocks or something, which, you know, we, we could see, we could always see their windows as exist, if they bring it even further, we're going to have to somebody's apartment, which could be, you know, maybe it's their in-laws or even some other strangers having their windows right looking at our bedroom windows and our living room, and that's unusual for this neighborhood, so we, we do object to that. You know, it could impact our property values if you want to sell a house if um, you know, this thing is, in a density, density-wise, closer to us than in a, in a way that's, I think, is unusual, I don't know if, you know, it is an undersized lot, in that, in that area of the lot, I mean, they do have a lot of room going back towards uh other neighbors, so those are some of the, you know, objections we have or concerns in addition to the water um kind of stuff that I guess should be, I don't know if anyone says, the EBA has come out to actually look at the site, but um, you know, we did send those pictures. And that was just a moderate rainstorm, it wasn't like a downpour or uh, or any kind of northeast or something, so we do have water sort of flowing, I don't, we haven't, there's no, I don't, I don't know about hydrology, but Sagamore Hill is kind of up above us, so water kind of flows generally down Sagamore Street from that area from the north towards Sagamore Street, so some of the water, I assume, might be, unless, you know, could come around and get into our yard more, because we have a drain right in front of our driveway and sometimes it's like a river, if there is a real downpour. So we are concerned about that.
Any comment? You, uh, any, any, you want to make any, any comments on any of this?
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the, the satellite imagery of kind of matching it up based on what he, what his concerns are. Um, and then you, you can use the footage measurement tool, so I, I do, I do see his concern on this, I, I'm not going to disregard that, that he's concerned about how close it is moving to the, to the property line. From, from a neighbor point of view, I could see that being a little, a little disruptive, um. The, the, moving it to the other side, though, um is, is the reason for the, for the garage doors on the side, was that for aesthetics?
Yeah, mostly aesthetics, yes, um, and also to have a more user-friendly driveway for them and not have, you know, an even longer mass facing the street.
Yeah.
Now it's the connector and the garage, and, you know, we're, you know, we're still, you know, forty-plus feet away from the property line, we only have to be fifteen.
Yeah, I, I, I see that right now on, on the map, so.
Right, and I just want to point out that we, we had a garage and we took it down, so I just want that to be considered. But also I want to make it really clear that this is for my parents, we're not renting this out to anyone.
There was a garage where the new addition, there used to be a garage in the new.
Years, years ago, yes.
Um, and did the neighbors live in the house when that addition was there?
Our neighbors that just spoke have lived there the whole time that we've had this current addition, which had been a garage and a room.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah, Tosh Blake here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, good, okay, yeah, just a, is, a couple of points, um, I heard, something about the garage, I, I think the, the, in the application, the I guess the, the philosophy was that, that the garage you want to, from the street, where actually nobody is across the street from them, um, there's no house across the street, you know, that's, that can see their house, that there's a lot of woods. Uh, to minimize the garage that way, but unfortunately for us, the garage in an unusual kind of orientation is facing us directly, which is un, like I said, complete anomaly for the neighborhood, and um, the application did say, I think, there was Mariah on the phone, um, she said it's mostly for her in-laws or intended for them, and that's, that's fine, but it also did say for a future um, a rental apartment, it did put that in there, so that was kind of an intention that maybe if they sell the house.
That, that's allowed under the bylaws, so I mean.
Oh, right, okay, so that's not the garage per se, that's fine, but um, yeah, I just, um, but I, I, our, one of our concerns really, the garage and the parking, because I, Mr. Stein said, well, they're within forty feet, but that's the structure, not the pretty large proposed, I mean, from the plans anyway, sort of like I call it a motor court, because it looks like a, it's an unusually large driveway, it goes right pretty close to our property line and it, no measurements were included for that, it just, you know, the drawing showed it right up to the tree line.
It does, it does meet the, it does meet the dimension issues under the by, under the bylaws.
That's fine, but um, like I said, the design is unusual for the neighborhood to have a garage bays facing the house, you know?
I think we get it.
Yeah, yeah, and I, like I said, we, we, if it was on the other side, we'd be like, oh, that's great, you know, we don't, we have no problem with that.
If I've learned anything in twenty years on uh
Yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals, if there's a heaven, there'll be no Butters.
Right, right. And just like, the lot does have tons of room on the other side.
So I guess, I guess, yeah, I just want to, I just want to reiterate that this structure can be built by right, it's just the apartment that we're here for.
Right, okay, okay, good to know, good to know.
Are there any questions, are there any other uh members of the public on the uh call that have any questions or comments? Okay, um, I just, bear with me a minute, I just want to check something. I wanted to, to be sure that um the applicants didn't also need a uh a vote of the board to allow a uh extension of a non-conforming use, because this is pointed out, uh, because this is in the RA district where the lot size, required lot size is uh two acres, and this lot presumably predates zoning or predates the RA district establishment, so it's one point one, two acres, and the, the bylaw says that uh in the following circumstances shall not be deemed to increase the non-conforming nature of non-conforming single and two-family structures, uh, and it specifically says uh, the existing structure is non-conforming solely because it is located on a lot which is non-conforming as to size and or lot frontage as the result of a zoning change and the existing structure and proposed alteration or extension meets all other current requirements of the bylaw including but not limited to setbacks height and lot coverage, and it does meet those conditions, so um, it does not need a uh of special permit for uh an extension of a non-conforming use, so um circling back to the, to the main issue, uh, let me just check uh if there are any other uh doesn't appear that there are any other uh Butters or members of the public on the call. Uh, are there any other questions from members of the board? Okay, there are not, um, and did you ju- just summarize again, Brian, uh what, uh, uh, what, how, how you will deal uh it with the, the runoff issue? So, we're clear on that?
Yeah, so in the past, um, on a paved driveway like this, I've um had them install a, you know, one-foot-wide gravel edge. Um, and then the driveway, you know, essentially pitches towards that edge and that's where it catches the runoff, in this case, we can also have an edge in that circle area, uh, potentially, um, and again, the uh water from the structure itself will be, you know, caught in, in subsurface infiltrators of the downspouts which will deal with, you know, any, unless, you know, unless you get a super heavy rain, they're going to infiltrate right into the ground.
I did, uh, in preparation.
I'm sorry? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Hey.
There you go.
Um, I've got a big bump. I did go look at the plan in relation to the uh requirements of the section three point six of the by, the bylaw. And it appears that um the proposed uh construction and apartment meets those requirements, there's about a dozen and a half of them. Um, I'm happy to go through them one by one, but by my reading, um, they do uh appear to, to, to meet those requirements, or they will be, some of them are prospective, they'll be, were uh required to uh meet them as a condition of uh any special permit. meet them as a condition of, uh, any special permit. One of the, uh, uh, requirements of the bylaw is that the board of appeals have not, uh, issued more than ten, uh, special permits under this section in the past twelve months. I have not double-checked, uh, with, uh, the, uh, building and apartment, but I think I can be fairly certain that that's the case. So assuming the board is amenable to granting the special permit, are there any, uh, additional, uh, conditions that the board would want, uh, to apply?
I, I would just like to know something about, I, I do understand, having had neighbors with lights and cars coming in and out, I do understand the neighbor's concern about cars. Um, Bill or Brian, maybe any suggestions for any like either fast-growing or thick trees that will really help block that light that's gonna be shining if you, if, depends if you back up or pull later, you know, however you want to park, but, you know, something to make sure that, just that the neighbors aren't getting headlights in those, in that, in those windows. I do, I do, uh, understand his concern about that.
Tim, do you want to say anything about, do you want to plant anything around there or what you will plant?
Yeah, so our plan is, you know, to, to put plantings there to, to create a blockage, so, uh, we can absolutely look at, you know, fast-growing type of things, I mean, it, it is pretty dense in there right now. Uh, so we can just add to it below what's there to make sure we, uh, create a barrier.
Yeah, I, you know, fences make great neighbors.
Uh, it's Todd Blake again, Sagamore Street. I was wondering, um, yeah, regarding the garage thing, I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how this goes. Has, uh, does, is there any kind of site plan review for maybe not the zoning board of appeals, but planning board as far as especially, specifically the garage, um, feature of the addition, you know, and I'm not talking about the apartment per se, but the, uh, the garage. Uh, is there, does that fall under any kind of, um, review from the town as far as, you know, how garage?
No, the, 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 first off, the, uh, you're entitled to have a garage under the bylaw and the, the, uh, the zoning board, uh, under the bylaw does not have design review of proposals other than on, with respect to the accessory apartment that the, rather vaguely, it says that the, something, essentially that the, you know, the, the design will hold together. You know, somewhat, that's within the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, three, three point six three, number two, Bill, uh, the site plan requires to show access, parking entry, and the parking is the garage.
Right, okay, so, um, essentially, we don't, we don't have design review over the, over the garage.
Okay, so now in the orientation of the garage, they're not sort of supposed to face the street or anything like that, they can.
No, the, the, with respect to the, with, it just says that, that the, with respect to this, the, uh, the, the apartment, that the entrances, if possible, be on the side or rear of.
Yeah, hidden from the street, yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
Oh, that's so.
Yeah, like our consumers, the garage bays themselves, you know.
No, we, we, the, the, there's nothing in the bylaw that says that, about the orientation of the garage.
Okay, okay, that's good to know.
Okay, um, Brian, just, uh, with respect to the, uh, garage, the question did come, uh, there is a question of what lighting is, uh, if any, is proposed, uh, any outdoor lighting on the garage?
Yeah, we're, we're required by code to have them at each door. Um, but, I mean, I can, we can suggest, um, you know, downlights essentially that wash the, you know, side of the garage versus go out, um, if that's okay with Tim and Mariah.
Well, that's a, a good point, one of my predecessors on the board who's since moved out of town, but he was very intent on having, um, light-skies compliant, um, dark-skies compliant lighting. And I think that's a good idea, so I think, um, I don't know, I wouldn't necessarily make it a condition, but I would, um, certainly make it a finding of fact that, uh, you know, any lighting be dark-sky compliant and be oriented so that it, to, to the extent possible does not shine onto a budding property.
Right.
Any other questions or poss- about possible, uh, uh, conditions other than what's obviously in the bylaw?
Is there a way to get the, I don't know what the grade's like there, I kind of know next door, but, um, can you make a sort of a runoff trench that would take water out to the street? And I don't know if there's public or street drainage out there or not.
Can't really do that, honestly, I mean, I mean, we shouldn't take it to the street. We should deal with it on site and that's, you know, that's what we're planning to do.
Okay.
There's enough vegetated area around the driveway and towards the street that we can, you know, again, in, infiltrate it along the edge and stone and then anything else can be in the vegetation.
Um, anything else? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to, uh, grant the, uh, special permit.
Yeah, this is, uh, Dr. Balsey, I'm the owner of the two seventeen Sagamore Street, um, my wife and Pamela, we are the, uh, joint owners of the, uh, two, we're active to Harex. And, um, see, I'm, we're, uh, we're concerned about the drainage, um, from Harex property into our, our property and therefore we submitted the pictures, um, to the zoning board of appeals and, uh, uh, what, uh, I thought the original, uh, proposal from the architect, uh, uh, Harex, so they're, they're gonna have a gravel driveway which, uh, but now they're talking about having a one-foot edge, I'm not sure if that's, I'm not a, I'm a, not a civil engineer, I'm a physician and I, I don't, ex, I'm not an expert on this, but I wonder if the one, the one-foot edge is adequate. I don't know whether they may even need a dry well or something, because there's so much, as it is, uh, water coming into a property even with a small amount of rain and, uh, this will, uh, I'm really concerned about that and concerned about, uh, when we lived there for forty years and, uh, both my wife and I, we are, will be seventy-five years old in few months and we really don't want to move and we like our house and would like to stay here as long as possible and, um, uh, I, uh, just concerned about, uh, the, the main reason we were told that, uh, they're moving the garage facing us is for aesthetic reasons, but as far as we are concerned, it's beginning when I saw, not anything, but I mean, you said the, according to the, you know, the.
Doctor, I think, I think the, you know, the issue of, the issue of the drainage is a legitimate issue. The issue of, the issue of, of, of the looks of it is beyond the scope of the zoning board of appeals, so.
Okay, fine.
I looked, I, I mean, to my eye, I, I understand, I, I saw the, we saw, saw the pictures that you sent and, uh, yes, there was pooling water. To my eye, and of course, I don't, I don't know exactly where the property line is, the water was pooling on, on the Harex property.
That's correct. Yeah.
Not on, not on your property, now, will this, will, the question is, will this project be, be such that, that runoff from their property will go onto your property? And that's, um, that, that's the question and, you know, you've heard, or your son has heard what, how the, how the architect and plans to deal with that. Um, I'm not a civil engineer, so, I don't know, but it, it's, you know, one of my colleagues on the board is an architect and I guess, well, he can speak for himself, but the, 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 the way they've intend, they intend to deal with it sounds reasonable.
Uh, I have, I have one more point, uh, the, when you build an addition according to the bylaws, it's gonna look like part of the existing home and again, I'm not an architect, I'm gonna make that very quite clear and, and I'm not a, picking as an expert, but I'm speaking simply as a neighbor, but does, the addition actually looks very different from the original house, almost it looks like two homes joined together and it's sort of, to me, that's not in spirit of the bylaw. And I would like that, uh, would like a comment from the board about that.
That, hi, so we brought that up at the very beginning, I asked Brian about that, we explained it quite simply in terms of just its.
I'm sorry, uh, you're breaking up, I'm, I can't hear you, sorry, go, go ahead.
Hi Doc, um, so we, I asked that question to Brian right when we first started, just on the overall reasoning for it. He gave a pretty straightforward reason, it just, it's, they don't, you don't want a large mass in front of the property that you can see from the road, so his explanation of how to break it up aesthetically for viewpoints was pretty straightforward.
We also have to remember that everybody has their own opinion on what's nice looking and what's not nice looking.
No, I understand, it's a very subjective thing, yeah, I understand that, yeah. And, um, uh, but still, I do feel that, uh, in our neighborhood, when I look at Sagamore Street, Blueberry Lane and, um, like Juniper and the distance between our house and their house will be the, the closest and we are concerned about our property value going down and, uh, there's no other, uh, uh, I can see neighbors have a three-car garage facing them so close to their living room or their bedrooms and it's, and also they'll be on the higher ground, that's another thing, which will be, like if I, if we stand up, if I stand in my living room and look at Eric's new addition, their car lights will be at my eye level and.
Well, they're, 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 they're planning, there will be screening there that, that will prevent um, the, the headlights from lights going into, and most, I mean, I, I don't know, but most people pull into their garage, they'll actually be pulling in, their headlights will be going the other way. I mean, most people, for, for, for the headlights to shine directly on your property, they'd have to back in, be backing into their garage. Now, they certainly can do that, but that's not the way most people go into their garage.
Okay, and another point I wanted to make is that unless they have all electric cars like Teslas, uh, their, their cars, it's gonna be a nuisance uh, in terms of noise and exhaust pollution, yeah.
Doctor, the, you know, I'm, I'm afraid, you know, I, I mean, you know, we want to listen to what you have to say, but if you're getting into electric cars, that's way beyond the boundaries of what this board can.
No, I'm just talking about the negative impact, that's all, all I'm saying about, yeah. And these, uh, uh, when you make an application, they talk about the negative impact and, uh, and it's that, uh, most people are not parking, hello, are you there, can you hear me? Okay, because, um, most people in the neighbors, they don't really, even though, like, we have two-car garage, but most of the time our cars are parked outside the garage unless there's a snowstorm coming and so they'll be, the cars will be right practically next to our windows, that's what.
That, that's.
That's hypothetical, we can't.
How they park it, how, how people park their cars, they own the property, just like you, they can park it pretty much where they want, so, you know, you hope that they'll be good neighbors and.
And the, the, time to, same with the shrubs they're gonna plant, uh, which, uh, because of the high, high difference between our, our house and they're not gonna make that much difference, because, uh, even the.
You know, the question was, did any of us go, we did not do a formal site visit. I drove by the property today, there was already quite a bit of screening between the two properties. So, you know, the, 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 you know, I, you know, based on what I saw, um, if, if there's gonna be additional screening, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with, you know, light from there coming, coming onto your property, that, that's gonna be, be bothersome to you.
What about if the garage doors.
We have raised this concern, doctor, thank you, we cannot answer this, Bill has already explained that this is beyond our purview. We understand your.
Yeah, I get it, no, I get that, but I thought I, I would raise this.
Move on with our meeting, we would like to move on, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, so I would entertain a motion to, uh, grant the special permit with the, uh, with the, um, because it would include all of the conditions in the, in the bylaw and, uh, all the matters that we, with respect to, uh, drainage and lighting that we discussed. Is there a, hey, uh, someone want to make that motion?
I will make that motion based off of the discussions this evening.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that was, uh, making the motion, uh, and Bruce, uh, seconding it, this is for our minutes taker. Uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with you, David.
Um, I.
Okay. Bruce?
I, I agree.
Okay, Bill Bowler, aye, okay, the motion passes. Um, okay, the, uh, process from here on is, I have fourteen days to, uh, write and file a, uh, decision with the, the date it's filed with the town clerk. There's a twenty-day statutory appeals period. When that runs out, uh, you get a certified copy of the decision and, from the town clerk and file it at the registry of deeds. You'll have to deal with the board of health and any other boards you may need to deal with before you can get a building permit. So, that's the, how it works from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Bill, thank you everybody.
Okay. Okay, um, Dave and Bruce, just before we, uh, before we, uh, adjourn, uh, just give you a heads up, we are likely to have a, um, forty B filed for a June meeting, this would be a, uh, ten-unit project uh, on Asbury Street by Habitat for Humanity. And then further down the road, And then further down the road. Probably not, not before the end of the year, there'll be a, there's a possible forty B, um, also on Asbury Street. Next to Canterbury Brook for um, forty five units by Habitat for Humanity, so.
Where's the, where's the most, the newest one or ones?
It it's, it's essentially, it's across the street from Canterbury Brook. It's um. Just past uh, Asbury Grove, I can't, I can't think of the exact um, address, but it's on the left, it's the. Thirty four.
Before patent or after patent? I'm trying to think of what spacer is there for it.
It's the property where they they've put up a cell tower. So if you're going down Asbury Street on the, you'll see on the left, there's a sign for. I can't think, it's Pioneer Arch or Arch.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's it's there, there's a driveway, it's, you go down the driveway, it's gonna be, it's sort of in back.
Oh, okay.
Bruce, have you ever had experience with the the large unit housing like this?
No, so I'll have to do some homework on that.
Bill, you got, can we take a, can we arrange a time for us all to go out there and take a look, just, because if you've done this before, Bill, I'd like to get, you know, kind of your idea and input, just to.
Well, there there are some materials that um, uh, I I've sent to Mary Ellen. And I'll have her be sure that she circulates it.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's it, and uh, thanks.
Welcome back.
Oh, I guess, uh, thanks, yeah, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote, Bruce?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bill? Aye, okay, thank you very much, good night.
Good night, gentlemen.